Good. All right. I'd like to convene today's meeting of the Westboro Select Board, it being Tuesday, May fourteenth, six P. M., and we are all in Memorial Hall. For those that are able and willing, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being live recorded by Westboro TV. Thank you very much, Westboro TV. And I'll now open it up for open forum. If there's anybody here to speak at open forum. Don't see anybody here, so we'll move on to item number two, concurrence with town manager, appointment of Allison Lawrence to the town accountant position.
Great. So we have Allison Lawrence, and as you know, the charter states that it's a town manager appointment with concurrence of the Select Board, and so Allison is here, and she can introduce herself and give some background.
Welcome, Allison.
Hi. Yeah, Allison Lawrence. I've been in the town of Lester for eleven and a half years, town accountant since 2016. Before that, I was the assistant town accountant. So I have a good background in all things that you're looking for. I know it's going to be a challenge. I know that you've had a lot of changes in the past few years, and I'm excited for it, and I'm excited to get started. My first day will be June third after a notice that I gave with Lester, so.
Fantastic. Welcome. We're looking forward to working with you, and certainly you've got a great team to be working with, so.
I'm very excited. It was very nice meeting everyone, and I think it'll be a really good fit.
Terrific. Welcome. Any other comments?
Sure. I will move to concur with the town manager's appointment of Allison Lawrence, beginning on June third, 2024, for a term to expire on June thirtieth, 2027.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Very excited to have you here.
Welcome to Westboro.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item number three, request to install Memorial Day decorations at the Rotary.
Yep. So this is the request that the board has seen annually from Janet Clark, which is the request to install a display for Memorial Day at the Horse Trough, which is that island across from Ferris Flowers or Red Barn. She did provide a photo of what she intends to display, but I think we've seen it in the past.
I'd like to thank Ms. Clark and her family for installing the display over the years. It's a beautiful full display, and I look forward to seeing it again this year. Is there any other further comments or?
I would move to approve the installation of a Memorial Day poppy display from May twenty-first, 2024 to May twenty-eighth, 2024.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Clark.
All right. Moving on to request to declare May as ame- I'm not going to get this word.
Amiotrophic.
Amiotrophic lateral sclerosis awareness month.
Yes. So Mr. Thomas Graff, who is a resident of Westboro, recently contacted the board with the request that this be recognized. We did not, we didn't receive a response as to whether or not he was planning to attend tonight, but you do have the proclamation before you if you want to move forward with the designation.
Terrific. And do we need to read that proclamation?
Yes.
Well, we need it back, actually.
I have it.
Sorry.
Oh, you have it?
Oh, it's in the packet.
All right. Terrific.
Do you want me to do it?
Please do.
Okay. I will move whereas amiotrophic lateral sclerosis, ALS, known by many as Lou Gehrig's disease, is a progressive fatal neurodegenerative disease in which a person's brain loses connection with the muscles, slowly taking away their ability to walk, talk, eat, and eventually breathe. On average, patients diagnosed with ALS only survive two to five years from the time of diagnosis, and there is no cure. And whereas every ninety minutes someone is diagnosed with ALS and someone passes away from this disease, and people who have served in the military diagnosed at a rate almost twice the rate of the general population. And whereas securing access to new therapies, durable medical equipment, and communication technologies is of vital importance to people living with ALS. Clinical trials play a pivotal role in evaluating new treatments, enhancing one's quality of life, and fostering assistive technologies for those living with ALS. And whereas we celebrate the tenth anniversary of the Ice Bucket Challenge through a renewed commitment to galvanize public awareness and support funding, leading to significant investments in ALS research. And whereas the ALS Association, as the largest philanthropic funder of ALS research globally, has committed over $154 million to support more than 550 projects across the United States and eighteen other countries. And whereas the commitment to accelerating the pace of discovery remains unwavering, fueled by the hope that one day ALS will be a livable disease for everyone, everywhere, until we can cure it. Whereas ALS Awareness Month increases the public's awareness of people with ALS's dire circumstances, acknowledges the terrible impact this disease has, not only on the person, but on his or her family in the community, and recognizes the research being done to eradicate this disease. Therefore, the Select Board of the Town of Westboro is hereby acknowledge May 2024 as Amiotrophic Lateral Sclerosis Awareness Month, given this fourteenth day of May in the year 2024.
Second. Thank you. Any further discussion? I'd like to just say thank you to Mr. Graff for bringing us to the board. I wish you all the best in championing ALS research and support now and in the future. All those in favor? All right. Thank you. Item five, authorization to execute forms related to receiving funds from the Inflation Reduction Act of 2022 related to geothermal installations at Fayles Elementary School.
Mr. Drew, it's here.
Yeah. I was just going to say, Steve, you want to come up?
Good evening, all.
Welcome.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight to request the Select Board to sign a limited power of attorney for the application to the IRS for the Inflation Reduction Act opportunity to receive an ITC investment tax credit for the refund of a portion of the town's money spent on the geothermal investment at Fayles School. This ITC payment will be at least $375,000 and will be received as a cash payment to the town. The signature of the chair of the Select Board is required to engage a tax attorney to oversee the process of developing the necessary paperwork to support our claim for payment. The geothermal component of the Fayles School project qualifies for the ITC under the Inflation Reduction Act signed into law in 2022. It is likely our application will be one of the first such applications since the work was completed in 2023. The timing of our application is critical to obtain a registration number in order to begin the process of documentation of the cost and the payment details for each component of the geothermal system installed at the school. The funds to support the filing have been voted by the school committee last week and will be included in the ITC credit when our filing is approved. Any questions? I think I gave you a lot of backup on what we're doing here, but I'm certainly just happy to answer any questions that I can.
That's awesome. Give us a question. I mean, how did you find out about this opportunity?
I've been watching this ever since the IRA, the Inflation Reduction Act, happened because there's a lot of pieces in it that deal with energy. And we also had discussions with our consultants, but one of the problems with this is once the act was voted, the IRS didn't come up with anything, any detail, so you knew what was going on. And they're slowly developing those details. Obviously, it was set up to fund projects that would start construction, be constructed, and then people would apply. Since we just happened to be on the right side of the IRA, the Inflation Reduction Act, we're the first ones that probably do qualify. So now, as those regulations have slowly developed, and of course, one of the handouts that I gave you gives you a little bit of information associated with that process. But what's super important about it is ITC investment tax credit had only been valuable for those who paid taxes because they had an ability to get the money back by not having to pay future taxes. What's unique about this legislation is that for municipalities, we get a cash payment if we qualify for the act. And based on the, on the people involved, we, and my own experience with this stuff, that I really do expect that it will be a minimum of 375,000, and it could be more as we develop the details of support. So other balance of plant adders, pumps, and so on can also be added to the program. And of course, the money we spend for these consultants will also be included in what we ask for. So, but to get started, we need to hire the tax consultant, which I think I supplied you with the information, as well as the form itself to sign, if you so vote. And I have checked on the credentials of this outfit and the individuals to know that it's true, so.
Any other questions?
No.
Looks good.
So I would move to authorize the Select Board Chair to execute all documents associated with the Inflation Reduction Act of 2022's tax credits for the geothermal project at Fayles Elementary School.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the work on this.
Yeah, thanks for bringing it forward.
So what I need is a signature on that, on that form.
Because it's due tomorrow.
Yeah, fifteenth, yeah.
Just me or?
Yes, just the chair.
You're the only one authorized, so make sure you sign it.
Those have my name. It doesn't even have to be legible. All you have to say is, yes, I did it.
And we just recorded the vote.
Thanks, Jill.
I thank you all and the town manager to get us here, so thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Steve. I don't see. Do you want to move on?
Yep. So the next one is the job descriptions, which Kim, the assistant town manager, will present.
Okay.
And then I'll actually be presenting number seven, the Semlach Agreement. The chief is unable to make it this evening.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you.
So in your packet, you have a proposed job description for a new corporal position, as well as a proposed wage schedule. As the board is aware, the chief brought forward a proposal to create a corporal position through the budget process and town meeting. We are in a position now where that was funded. We're looking to your approval of the job description and the wage schedule. These positions are represented by the supervisors' unit. They were involved in impact bargaining related to these changes. If you approve these, it's just subject to final notice to the union before we implement.
Any questions?
I just had a, so when I was looking at it, it, and this may just be standard, it says that reports to the police chief. So ultimately, they do, but they don't directly report to the police chief, or how does that?
Very top, right?
Yeah, right at the top.
Right. All of our job descriptions ultimately reflect that.
Okay.
So while there is the rank structure, ultimately, they are pointed by, yeah.
Ultimately goes to the department head.
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
But that's consistent with our other descriptions. The other thing I will note on the job description that you have in your packet, the job code is blank. That's just, we refer to that. It's really the wage table that's the critical piece, but we'll call it C. One.
Any other questions? All right. I did have a couple of questions. I noticed under accessional duties and responsibilities, paragraph two, I didn't see any mention of bike. I don't know if we do any patrolling by bike, if that's something that would be considered part of the corporal position or not. Just something to maybe talk with the chief about. There was also a comment about sergeant not on duty, and this would, the corporal would act as the sergeant on, not on duty, and I don't know, again, the chief's not here, so maybe a better question for him. But to understand if that is a scenario that actually does happen, or it would be expected to happen to have a non-sergeant.
That was one of the reasons.
Yeah, that's the purpose.
By the way, it was also lieutenant not on duty, but yeah. So, okay. I just want to make sure I understood that piece of it. And then it also mentions dispatch duties, and knowing that the dispatch center is over in the fire department, what does that entail for a corporal position?
Which section specifically are you looking?
Dispatch duties was underneath.
Certificates and registrations.
I should have marked these.
I believe we've maintained that in all of our job descriptions. I don't know that it refers specifically to operating in the dispatch center.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Under other skills and abilities, the very last sentence, perform all dispatch duties as needed.
Oh, okay.
So I just wanted to maybe check into that to better understand it and see if it's still appropriate.
Make the positive thing is it says as needed, so if it's not needed?
Yeah, right. It allows for backup provisions.
Okay. So that being said, can I get a motion?
I'll move to approve the corporal job description as presented and amend the town's classification plan. Further subject to meeting the town's bargaining obligation with the supervisors' union authorized the town manager to execute an MOA between the town and the union to adopt and incorporate the proposed corporal wage schedule into the current bargaining agreement.
Second. Any further discussion?
All those in favor? Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
All right, Kristy.
Yep. So this is just approval of our Semlach, or Central Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council Mutual Aid Agreement. So Semlach is a regional task force comprised of forty-five communities that provides mutual aid and specialized services for certain situations. This is for our police department. Some of the specialized services include a SWAT unit, collision reconstruction team, and motorcycle unit. The town has participated in this for several years, so the board's being asked to reaffirm that under this agreement in your packet. And this is recommended by the chief.
Any questions?
Yes.
Were there any material changes from prior agreements?
I, I don't believe any, I, the chief didn't, wasn't aware of the specific changes, so I don't know any of any material changes.
I, I went back and looked. I couldn't figure if this is just a normal renewal, or if they were updating. It looks like it's just a renewal of what's already been in place.
Yeah, I just had one quick question. Do we know if all neighboring communities are part of this contract as well? Forty-five communities, seems like all of Worcester County, but I don't.
Yeah, I believe so. I have to go and look at the website, but it's forty-five communities, so.
Terrific. Any other questions?
No, I mean, I know I've seen this being used in town here for events, turkey trot, other things where they have, you know, the motorcycle units with, from Semlach, and they've, you know, participated, the three-hundredth parade was a big one, et cetera. So I know we participate in that. I think that the value add is, is important and supportive of it, so.
All right.
Yeah, it looks like it's just about all of Worcester County.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the town of Westboro's participation in the Central Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? All right. The next topic is the contract with the Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services. I will recuse myself from this discussion because my wife works in the department, and her position is specifically called out in the contract. So I'll step away from the board and have the vice chair run this part of the meeting.
Thank you. Kristy, you want to?
Yep.
Take lead here?
I have some slides that I'm gonna. Yeah, that's right. It's easier. So this is just an update as to, you know, where we are now and where we, how we've, how we've gotten to this point. So this, the contract documents that you have in your packet, there are four of them. They all relate to us contracting out clinical services through Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services for our Youth and Family Services Department, and that would be effective for fiscal '25, which begins on July first. As you all know, we've had, Westboro's had a Youth and Family Services Department for many years, where we offer clinical services as well as other supportive services in behavioral health and wellness. Beginning on July first, we would shift our model, which currently has one full-time administrative assistant, a full-time director, and two part-time clinicians, to one full-time outreach and resource coordinator, which would be employed by the town, continue to be employed by the town of Westboro. We've actually already made that change with our current administrative assistant, moving her into that role in order to facilitate the transition. And then contracting out clinical services to Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, where the town would be afforded two full-time clinicians that would be located in the town of Westboro to serve our residents. Additional, additional services from Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services would be oversight by their clinical director, John Rifkin, who the board has met, as well as trainings, workshops, different groups. Also, SYFS has a robust internship program, and so the interns would also be part of this program and able to provide services. Again, really important that it would be located within our current offices, and then our youth commission would remain intact as an advisory body to the town and the contractor. We've gotten some questions about client transitions, so just wanted to touch on that here. The current clients of Westboro Youth and Family Services have been informed of the upcoming changes from their current clinicians, so the two current part-time clinicians. We, the SYFS's clinical director has developed, had developed a letter, which she provided to our clinicians, which they were able to give in person to their clients to, to give them information about the upcoming transition and what that might look like, and talking about some of the policies that we have. Once the contract documents are fully executed, clients seeking to continue to receive services would then transition to SYFS, go through an intake process, and sign appropriate releases. So they are actually working with the clients who are choosing to transition. The, our current clinicians are working to develop some summary documents for the new clinicians. So to date, there's been some general discussion, but no information has, no protected information has been shared. In terms of records transition, which is another question that we've received, the town will retain custody of all past and present WY, or Westboro Youth and Family Service client records. These are town records. It's a town department, just like any other town department. They're not public records, so the town certainly is under the requirements of any HIPAA or any other privacy laws, but they are town records, so we will retain them. We've actually reached out, Kim has reached out to the secretary to understand our requirement for retaining those records, and so we're working with staff to make sure that they're compiled, compiled and securely stored. Clients can certainly request their release if they were to want to release them to Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services or any other provider. And then also, what's new in your packet, which we haven't seen before, there's, as I said, there's four documents. So there's the actual contract, there's the scope of services, there's the memorandum of understanding. The contract really sort of lays out the costs and all of the kind of legalese of entering into these contracts. The scope of services is what we're expecting to receive, which is one, which is similar to what I just went through in terms of group work. Two full-time clinicians. The MOU is really about how the two organizations will work together. The town and our one full-time employee with SYFS, and then this new document, which you're seeing, is the business associate agreement. And that's really something that we've been working with our attorney, as well as SYFS's attorney, in terms of just being being diligent about the HIPAA protection, and so making sure that we're able to share information in an appropriate way, and that everyone is following HIPAA and privacy requirements. So again, the goal of this transition is to enhance mental health services to the community while maintaining low barriers to accessing these services. I will say that one of the things that, in addition to meeting with Youth and Family Service clinicians, are the clinical. our, the clinical director at SYFS has also met with the school clinical director. So even though we are not accessing clinical services through, for the schools, there is a very clear relationship there, and so certainly wanting to maintain that relationship, enhance it in any way that we can, and make sure that there continues to be low barriers for service for our students and our students' families. So this is Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services with their mission. They operate under a twelve-member board of directors with four student liaisons. They currently employ eleven staff members and seven interns. They are, they have been looking for a new executive director. Additional staff will be hired to contract with the town of Westboro, which is another question that we've received. Is, are those folks ready to go on July one? They, they do expect to have one new full-time clinician by July first. If for some reason that does not happen, the clinical director is able to take on the current caseload, because it's, it's a small number of clients, to get to that transition. They will not hire a second clinician until we have the need for it, and the town will be billed accordingly. In looking at the contract costs, this is the same slide that we showed at town meeting. So the two full-time clinicians, clinical oversight, benefits, administrative oversight, all of the things that we would expect through this contract was a total cost in FY twenty-five of a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. And as you remember, at town meeting, we shifted a lot of the cost of, or a lot of this budget from salary wages to expenses to cover this contract. And so the, the contract did go, or the budget did go up a little bit over FY twenty-four, but not significantly. Oh, here, you can see here. So we went from, it was, went up about five thousand dollars in order to cover the contract and salary wages for fiscal twenty-five. So I think that is my last slide. So the other one was next steps, which we, that's what we're doing right now. As soon as we sign this contract, it would go to Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services for their signing. But the documents that were put into your packet yesterday are the final documents approved by both our attorney and their attorney.
Perfect. Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, I think in, in looking at the updated version, it really seemed like it was mostly wordsmithing and, you know, sort of corrections and things, but no, I didn't see any substantive changes. Would you agree?
Right, yes. Yeah, no substantive changes.
Other questions?
Looking forward to this.
Nope.
Just one clarity, so the, the number that you showed there from what we put in the budget, that's kind of a, I'll call it best-case scenario or worst-case, I mean, it won't go over that, but from what you said, if they don't hire that second clinician, we would expect in the first year that it would be a number somewhat less than what is in that contract.
Correct, yep.
Perfect. Hey, someone want to make a motion?
Absolutely. I move to authorize the town manager to finalize and execute all contracts with Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? It's three to zero, one abstention. Or one recusal, sorry. Three voting. Three in favor. Yeah.
All right, moving on to item nine, request for letters of support for grant application for downtown rotary improvements and sewer line rehabilitation.
Thank you. So this is a request for two letters of support. So the board is very familiar with the town's application to the Community One Stop for Growth Program, which is sort of a one-stop shop for grants for many that are, are available through different state agencies. So last year, we actually applied for this and were able to obtain the grant for the downtown development plan. Previously, we've applied for our mass works grants through this opportunity. So this year, our community development folks, planning, DPW, got together to talk about what they might be applying for to make sure we're not in conflict with each other. And so we're asking for letters of support for both of these projects. So one is the downtown rotary improvements. So just as a description, Westboro has the downtown plan, which provides, or will provide us with strategies to improve our downtown. The grant funds would be used to hire an engineering firm to further investigate the design of downtown, including in-depth traffic and infrastructure analysis, and quick build-outs of different scenarios to analyze the impact to traffic, parking, and pedestrian safety. So this would be the result of preliminary conceptual plans of rotary and downtown improvements, which will actually be discussed in June by our current engineer. And that's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then the second opportunity is sewer line rehabilitation, which is to, to improve sewer, sorry, to, to deal with our sewer pipes in the downtown as part of the comprehensive plan to improve our sewer capacity. Work's already underway, but this would allow us to continue the project, and that is, I think, one point eight million. And these are both, I know that, I think that they've sought letters from several boards, but I know that the EDC last week did approve letters of support as well.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you for bringing these forward, absolutely.
So I would move to authorize the chair to sign letters of support for each grant proposed.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you, Kristi.
Thanks.
So do you have those for me to sign now, or are you going to do it later?
Please, can we until later?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, on to item ten, stormwater regulations amendment. See Chris here, welcome, Chris.
Good evening. Chris Plant, Director of Public Works. So you all, I hope recall that you signed or approved the stormwater utility regulations. We identified a typo in those regulations that we're trying to correct, and so we're asking for an amendment to be made to those regulations. If you look at the regulations, on page five, section three talks about rates. Everything in that section is correct. But if you then flip to the summary table, which is in pen X A on page ten, in the footnotes, footnote one, it says four dollars and eighty-one cents on a quarterly basis, and it actually should be monthly basis. And so that number is part of the calculation for properties over ten thousand square feet. So we need to correct that number, and then there's a, so we're changing quarterly to monthly, and we're changing times four to times twelve. That's our adjustment is. And it truly is a typo. All of our communications, all the presentations and everything else that we did and all the charts we showed were clear about the numbers. This was just a, I think, a copy paste kind of thing in that, in that table.
Yeah, I think, because if you look at the table, the quarterly fee for two thousand square feet is fourteen forty-two. So in the footnote, four point eight one is clearly a third of, of that amount. Yeah. So, no, thank you for bringing this forward.
Any other questions?
No.
Straightforward.
Chris, I guess, I just had one question on that table. That last column is headed with quarterly fee. And I'm just curious, is, should that be changed to monthly fee? Is, or, I mean, I'm assuming that we're billing all property owners at the, at the same time. So we talk about monthly fee dividing, so I'm just curious, the numbers are quarterly numbers, but the way you're describing it is monthly. So I didn't know, is the calculation for single-family residents and all other properties, that calculation is based on monthly, but it's in a column headed with quarterly, so I didn't know.
Yeah, it's.
I understand what you're doing, I need to do, but I.
I honestly couldn't think of a better, like, it's, we're trying to make sure everybody under, like, there's a variety of ways to calculate your bill, and everybody asks it, kind of, what's my bill a different way?
Yeah.
We bill quarterly, and so that's what that column reflects in the table. The footnotes, I, I think we just assumed that, and maybe that's bad, but we just assumed that you could either calculate your month, your annual fee or your quarterly fee based on the footnote, so.
Okay. All right, that's fine. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion?
Sure. I move to amend the stormwater regulations as presented.
Second. All those in favor? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
I don't think he's done.
He's not done. Now we're going to talk about the item ten, no, excuse me. Item eleven, sewer update.
Yes, so you may be hoping for something interesting from me, but I don't have a whole lot, other than the fact that the moratorium is in place as you all approved. We've been working on producing the documents that we said we would produce, and we're on track to do that. So over the next couple of weeks, we'll be, well, probably early June, we'll be distributing to the staff this draft table that we discussed, that's going to show kind of where we stand flow-wise. And we'll get some feedback on that, refine that, and then we'll take the next steps. I assume, come back to you and show you some of the preliminary results, and, and then make some recommendations for moving forward. We did meet with the wastewater treatment plant board recently and had a broad discussion about the plant capacity, and, and we didn't identify any immediate next steps. You know, there's lots of people involved, and everybody has kind of a view on things, and so there's some, some work to be done moving forward as to how we're going to proceed, if, if that ends up being an avenue we want to go down in terms of the plant. But Shrewsbury, who is a member, obviously Westboro, represented by us, and then the plant board themselves, we're all present, and we discussed, and we agreed to some regular meetings over the next several months to help us kind of start charting a path forward. So I think that's progress. Doesn't give us a solution right away, but certainly is, is good steps in the right direction. So that's.
Questions?
The update.
Just one quick one for you, Chris. Understanding that the D P's taken some more interest in this, they weren't in that meeting. I'm just curious, what is their involvement at this point, and, you know, how are they kind of looking at this now?
So the meeting was actually pulled together because the board, the plant, received a question from the D E P regarding our flow at the plant, so don't want to throw out all the numbers again, but basically, we have an allotment to the plant, and once you get to eighty percent of that allotment, the D E P, that's a threshold that the D E P then will come back to the plant and say, you know, like, ask the question, basically, do you have a plan? Are you, they, they want to make sure that you're not just on some trajectory that's going to put you over your limit. So they ask a question, give us an update, and so the, the board was hosting this meeting so we can talk about our responses. Our response is what we've done, which is our moratorium, and that's what we feed back as, as our response, at least our interim response, until we come up with a longer-term plan. So the, the trigger was the eighty percent, which everybody has, is either exceeded or is hovering at. Westboro's about seventy-nine percent, but we're pretty close. The other two are over, so that's, that's D P's question.
That, that helps, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Yeah, there's no, yeah, no motion or anything required, so.
No, appreciate the update.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Keep it moving.
Yep. All right, moving on to item twelve, Westboro TV update, with Steve Hart, Karen Henderson, and appointment of the select board member to Westboro TV Subcommittee. Welcome, Karen. Welcome, Steve.
Good evening.
I'm never on your side.
She's never on my side either.
Every once in a while, Karen, every once in a while.
So whilst Karen is just setting things up, I just wanted to say a very big thank you to you for fitting us in this evening when you've got such a long agenda, so we will try and be equally as efficient as the past.
We freed up a lot of time tonight, so.
But we like efficiency.
We could go on and on.
We can play this out at three o'clock in the morning. So, anyway, we're here on behalf of Westboro TV, as, as you know, I'm the chair of the board at this time, and Karen, our wonderful general manager. And I just want to spend just a minute or two recapping on the relationship between the town and Westboro TV, not just for your benefit, but for anybody who might be watching us this evening or for future reference. So back in the misty days of two thousand and four, very nearly twenty years ago, in the fall, the town established an organization, a nonprofit organization called Westboro TV. It has an appointed board, four of the members of that nine-person board being select board appointees. And we're there to provide local access, public, public access, educational and government-related services. And I think we make a pretty good fist of that, so Karen and the team make a pretty good job of that. So the town, at that time, entered into contracts with two cable providers, Verizon and Charter, you'll be familiar with that. We continue with those relationships, albeit that we negotiate on a, on a interim basis. And the funding from those providers goes directly to Westboro TV. There is no additional cost to the property tax or any other tax burden on the community at this time. And so that funding from those cable companies is based on revenue that comes from the number of subscribers and the services that people contract with, with those providers. I've got to say, that funding is also controlled to a maximum of five percent. That's not by you, it's not by us, it's by the Federal Communications Commission. So when we negotiate, we're negotiating with a very narrow sort of window, because we're currently at four and a half, and we're hoping to go to five this year, sorry, my apologies, four, and we're hoping to go to five this year. So that model is not unique to Westboro, it's something that's across the state and many other states. And as I say, the FCC have a finger in the pie as well. So why are we here? We're here because we have a pretty big financial challenge. We're funded by streaming services, but, sorry, we're funded by cable services, but as we all know, and you can see society as a whole, people are cutting the cord. There are fewer and fewer people who are subscribing to those cable services. And so here in Westboro, the decrease in the number of cable subscribers since two thousand and fifteen, we're down thirty-six percent, just here in town, across Charter and Verizon. And the decrease in revenue that means to Westboro TV is down twenty-four percent since two thousand and fifteen. That's a fair chunk of money. And those decreases mean that we're having to continually turn to our, our reserves, which have been built up over the last few years, to a point where they're now diminishing very quickly. We have here, I hope, yeah, we can see the grad, the little chart there. Basically, what we're trying to, we're showing here is that we go back to two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty-three, and as I mentioned, revenue down twenty-four percent. I'm really pleased to say that when it comes to expenses, over that period in time, our expenses are just up nine percent. And I think that's a pretty good message to be sending people. We are not profligate, we are lean, I won't say mean. But, you know, thanks to Karen's good stewardship and, and the team as a whole, and the board in there supporting them, you know, we really tried to keep those expenses down, but nonetheless, revenue is down twenty-four percent. And so when we look at the projections and the reason we're here, and, and our board took, took the decision that we should be here now, is that we really want to just make sure people understand that if this situation were to continue as is, our reserves would be zero by the end of two thousand and twenty-six. And what is more, there would be a funding gap of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand by two thousand and twenty-seven. That is at today's numbers, today's staffing, and today's operations. And I think I'm going to turn over to Karen just to mention what we believe to be is a value to the town in respect to what it is we do and why we believe that we should continue to be doing it.
Right, so, I mean, certainly not a sales pitch, but to make sure, I know you have a good understanding, but again, just for the public, you know, despite those drops in, that drop in revenues, we do try to be good stewards of our building and our funds and, and provide the services and those PEG, local access, PEG standing for public education and government. So those services to the town as dictated by those contracts, that that's what Westboro TV. that's what Westboro TV would do. So, just on the public side, you know, if we take our 2023 numbers, we had 420 programs, we did 80, more than 80 studio shows, we had over 360 hours of coverage in the kind of public arena. What is that made up of? Veterans events, Memorial Day, Veterans Day, we cover church services, especially for those people who are not able to get out, and to those services, really important to that group of people, kind of event marketing and coverage for our community organizations, I would call it that. You know, our community organizations are such a big deal here in Westboro, and whether it's the Community Land Trust, or the Rotary Club, or the Women's Club, or, okay, the Civic Club, they really appreciate kind of the marketing piece of it that we do, you know, to get the word out there and let people know about what they have to offer and the events they have to offer, you know, Council on Aging, and up at the Senior Center, those types of things. We do a number of studio shows, and we also have done, and you're well aware of, the business promotions that we've done in town. We can't do promotions in the sense that, you know, eat at Joe's, but we do try to do Chronicle-esque type programming to highlight some of our local businesses, and we've partnered with the Economic Development Committee and created a few dozen now videos about our local businesses in town, which I think means a lot to them and shows them that Westboro is really supportive of what they're doing. Our educational programming, over 190 programs, 260-plus hours, of course, all the concerts, the plays, we're doing those little go-in buggies with the kids now, but we get to all of those schools, we cover fine arts, all sports, of course, you know, up at the high school, we cover a lot of that. We also have a lot of journalism students that come into the studio, I don't know how many people are really aware of that, but we have students in the studio almost every day. We have, whether it's from the high school or also from Assabett, and we always have an Assabett co-op or two that work for us, we host their entire classes, come over, so those are all things we do where we're actually working directly with kids and giving them those opportunities, and then where we can highlight kind of teaching and learning in the district where it's appropriate. And then, of course, government meeting-wise, we covered over 170 meetings last year, over 300 hours, a lot of them were select board.
Sean's fault.
But it's a great way, right, and I always say to people, not just to keep the town informed, but also, I know you all agree, really helpful for the various boards in town, when they're trying to work with one another to be able to reflect, whether it's town department heads or boards in town, to be able to watch those meetings also, so I think just helping the town work better together. But it's not just the live broadcasting, we archive those, we replay those, they make them available online, they're available on TV, so there's a lot that goes into that besides just meeting coverage. And then, we've been doing a lot with various town departments and trying to highlight some of what our town departments do. We just put a really nice video out there about the first in a series for the DPW on cemeteries in town and letting people know about that. We've done some work on their, like, the tree division there, and we did a great video, I hope you all saw, on a police recruitment video for Chief Lenardi and his group, which is just fantastic. So, it's not just doing that, it's also just this really high-quality video that's now out there to help them with recruitment, and we had a meeting today with Chief Purcell to do the same for the fire department. So, again, kind of just to let you know, those are the types of things when people say, well, what do they do? I know they cover government meetings and town meeting, there's really a lot that goes on across the street and out on the road.
Karen, can I just add that you're always there when we need you, and so you also did the tour of the community center for us, so we were able to show that to people on our website. You did also the tour of the golf club, so that we were able to sort of take people on a tour without them being there, so those, I think, were really important.
Right, and helping where we can with various things, if you guys had a meeting today over at Forbes...
Yes, thank you.
And so, from an audiovisual perspective, where we have a lot, a lot of insight and knowledge into those things, helping Mark Stockman and Christie, or Fred Lenardo has another meeting on Thursday, that we kind of go a little above and beyond the Westboro TV aspect doing those, and happy to do it.
And we certainly appreciate comments such as Christie's just there, and I think, you know, what strikes me is that we can look at these numbers and say, that's great output, but it's actually what went into actually producing all those hours of programming, there's an awful lot that goes on before we can actually put it up on the channels, so, you know, it's a very good, great team effort. So, the bottom line, you know, the funding shortfall needs to be addressed, and the Westboro TV board, I happen to be chair, but we have discussed this, and we felt, you know, one of the first places we should, we should come to is the select board, not to just ask you for a blank check, but more to just make you aware of the, you know, the issue and the timescales that we currently face. So, to continue to provide the services, you know, at that current breadth and quality and level, that funding shortfall is a real challenge for us, needs to be addressed by 2027. Now, there are two, a couple of unknowns at least, one of which I will speak to, which is, we are currently, and I happen to also be a member of the town's Cable Advisory Committee alongside with the select board member Shelby Marshall, Brian McLaughlin, who is my vice-chair at Westboro TV, we are currently in negotiations with Charter, our contract is up. We are hoping, and we have reasonable sort of confidence that we will be able to get Charter to 5% this year at this time round. This is based on what we see from other towns, and also our legal counsel, who is involved in a number of negotiations across the state. If we do that, it actually has a very positive benefit to us, because not just the Charter, who have the fewer subscribers, but we also have a clause in the recently negotiated Verizon contract, that if we can get Charter up to 5%, Verizon, who are currently at 4%, will actually come up to 5. That's great, isn't it? Unfortunately, it's not a fortune, but it is a help. So, that is ongoing, but...
I was going to just jump in, that's where you'll see a little bit in the revenues, where, you know, we're going down, and then there's that little bump. If we get up to that 5% in 2025, we will see a bump, but of course, we know that those revenues continue to decline at about 3.5% per year, a little more than that, and so it'll give us a little bit, and then it will start to decline again.
So, we're actually being very optimistic by including those numbers here in the figures today, tonight.
Right.
So, I think, Karen, you're going to speak to one other...
Right, so about the streaming bill, which I've come before you, before a few times now, you know that this has been an ongoing piece that we've really been pushing, because in thinking about the funding shortfall, we really thought, you know, one of the things we really wanted to see was the funding for local access shift with the viewing habits, and the viewing habits have shifted from cable to streaming, and so it would make sense to us that the funding would shift. Again, that would be no, wouldn't touch taxes of the town, we wouldn't have to worry about that, we'd have some funding there. So, thank you for your support in that regard. You've written a few letters along the way, and I appreciate it both as a board and I know individuals, and the latest news I can give you on that, it's moving very quickly right now, but it did come out of committee, so if you'll recall, we were hoping for it to come out of the Joint Committee on Advanced Information Technology, Internet and Cybersecurity, say that a few times. So, the AITIC...
It's got to be an acronym.
It's an acronym. AITIC, Joint Committee, which was actually chaired on the Senate side by our own Senator Moore, who does a show with us once a month on the 01581, so we have a lot of conversations with him, and we've been, we've been pushing him along the way here, and as it turns out, it did come out of that committee with a favorable recommendation, which is somewhat miraculous, because it's really, really hard to get out of committee with a favorable recommendation. So, that's, that's the good news. I guess more good news, or some, or just news, is that it was slightly rewritten, so it's a little bit different than we had, which is normal, which we had originally asked for, we being Mass Access, which is the access centers from across the state. So, they did make some changes to how it was written and what would happen with the funding there, and it is currently, went to the Senate Ways and Means and to the House Ways and Means, and the latest that we got just today was that it was added to the Senate budget as an amendment, it's Amendment 203 in the Senate budget, so it's been given a new number, it's been added to the Senate budget during the Senate Ways and Means, and that they are supposed to be voting across the board, not just on that, but between Tuesday and Thursday of next week. So, the request that was made to us was to contact our senators and ask them to cosponsor. So, our senator happens to be Senator Moore, who, this just came out of his committee, so, and my understanding was that usually he does not cosponsor something that's been in front of his committee, that's just a, maybe not ethical, I mean, he's allowed, but I think a choosing on his part, but so we're hoping that it gets cosponsors from other senators across the state, and we will keep you posted, but that's kind of where that stands right now, and I don't think we really have a call to action in that regard for you at this moment while we're waiting for that.
So, back to why we're here, one was to raise awareness, the other is to hopefully provide a little bit of assurance that the board of Westboro TV is not asleep at the wheel. We are here because we wanted to make you and the community more aware of the issue. We have taken the step of forming a Westboro TV Board of Directors Subcommittee, a Finances Subcommittee, and we have, I think another item on the agenda is, select board member Shelby Marshall has been invited to join us, Shelby is also a member of the town's Negotiation Committee, so that would be very helpful to us, as she understands some of the funding and the financing. We are undertaking a complete review of Westboro TV's expenses and services, but again, I come back to the fact that, you know, if we've only gone up 9% in the last nine years, there's not a lot to cut, although I had a bright idea that we could save server space by perhaps eliminating all those going buggies that we sell. If that doesn't get you deselected, nothing will. So, we're also, and I have to say, that committee, that Subcommittee is under the chairmanship of somebody you'll know, Todd Alexander, oh, Todd is here, Todd, sorry, we didn't, so Todd, another fellow board member, has kindly agreed to chair that Subcommittee. Todd brings some experience across other areas of industry and business, including the fact that, you know, we do have to consider, as part of our considerations, we actually own the bank, Westboro TV owns the building at 33 West Main, what would be the implications if we had to actually sell and move on? Now, I have to say, that may sound great, we could raise money, but already, we start to say, hang on, this would cost us a thick end of $300,000 to move and fit out another location, we would then have to either pay rent or some sort of, we could even stay and maybe do sale and leaseback, but really, all we're doing bluntly would be kicking the can down the road for two or three years at the most. So, nonetheless, you know, it is something we are considering, because it is there. The other thing that we're considering is whether we should, we will need to make a case for some form of supplemental funding from the town itself, and that means from the community, but again, we're not at that stage yet, and we are hoping not to be. So, our next steps, apart from that we would request that you vote to nominate, to elect Shelby as a member of the Westboro TV Finances Subcommittee, we propose that that Subcommittee, as I say, under the chairmanship of Todd, and Bill Linane is another member, so we're here in force, that Subcommittee, we hope to complete considerations and report firstly to our own board at Westboro TV, and then to yourselves as a select board, no later than fall of this year, 2024, and in the meanwhile, should anything change in regard to the state's bill in any way, obviously, we would advise you, especially if there were to be a call to action in terms of support, you know, in regard to that state streaming bill, and again, I would be remiss if I didn't echo what Karen just had to say, thank you for your support so far, we really do appreciate it, we appreciate the support of the community, and likewise, we hope we're here not just to celebrate our 20th in a few months' time, but our 50th in 30 years' time, so...
50th.
50th, 50th, Karen.
Okay.
So, that's, that's it really, in a nutshell, from us, thank you for your time. Anything else?
That's it from me, I don't know if anyone has any questions, we're happy to answer them, it's a lot of information.
Yeah, so, first of all, thank you both very much for coming tonight, and Karen, thank you, and Steve, thank you for all you do for Westboro TV and for the folks of Westboro. You mentioned that they were looking for Senate sponsors for this bill, do they have House sponsors for the bill? We do have two reps.
Right, and they, right now, it's only come up in Senate Ways and Means, or as of the latest email I got, but yes, they will do the same thing on the House side, so I, well, I'm assuming they will do the same thing on the House side, and when we get those, I will definitely reach out to Kate and to, sorry, Representative Donahue and to Representative Kane, who have always been supportive and have cosponsored the bills, the two different bills that have come up in the last few years here, absolutely.
And, and Westboro TV owns the building outright, that...
That is correct.
Yes, again, you know, just through very good stewardship and the ability at the time to do so, the building was bought from a video bank.
I appreciate you, you know, suggesting that, hey, it's, it's on the table that it would be sold, but I, but I agree, I think that does seem sort of, you know, pound-foolish, you know, to then have to find space somewhere else and rent it, so thank you for offering, or at least considering, but yeah, I, that doesn't sound like the right move to me.
Currently, I think, in fairness, Todd, I think all cards are on the table, but, you know, some of them are probably not worth laying down.
And, yeah, I would say last, you know, Shelby's out of town today, I mean, I guess we're taking your word for it, that she wants to be on your committee, right?
She does.
She does.
She's bust that up the retreat.
Yeah, no, she definitely...
She'll let us know otherwise in two weeks, right?
That's why she's out of town.
Talking to Patrick and...
She'll be cursing us later.
Right.
Thank you very much.
All right.
No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
So, so, you have any question?
Nope.
You want to make a motion?
I was going to move to appoint Shelby Marshall to serve as the Select Board Representative to the Westboro TV Subcommittee.
Second. Any further discussion? Now, those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for presenting, and for all you do. Todd, Bill, thank you for being willing to serve on the committee as well, it's a super-important service to the town, so thank you very much.
Appreciate it, take care.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to item 13, Waste Management Program.
So, I know our Public Health Director had hoped to be present, but they have a meeting going on at the same time, so I will...
Do you want to skip or come back, or...
I think I can, I think we can move forward, yeah. So, this is, there's two items under this agenda item, so one is the approval of the Waste Zero contract, and the second is the approval of the permit or sticker fee and the bag fee. So, I'm going to start with the fees, if that's okay. As we've been working through this, the board has heard us say what the, what the bag fees would be, which is the $10 for the small bag, a roll of the 10 small bags, or $10 for a roll of five of the larger bags, so a dollar per bag for the small bags and $2 per bag for the larger bags. That was actually included in the implementation plan that the board approved and that we put forward for the grants, but I wanted to, as we're talking about fees, I wanted to sort of specifically have you approve that, that fee schedule, as well as the fee schedule related to the permit. So, in the past, the Board of Health has always set the, the transfer sticker fee, we're sort of shifting the responsibility of that over to the Select Board, you'll also be the signatory on all of the contracts as well, and so, understanding that, understanding that the, the bags and the, we're calling them permits now, not stickers, but, so the sticker fee or permit fee will represent the revenue that the town receives through this program. So, just sort of backing up, the town has historically received about $200,000 from the, the sale of the transfer stickers. That money goes into the general fund, and so that money is just used as a local receipt that lowers the levy. So, we wanted to make sure that we were maintaining that $200,000 so that there, we didn't see a spike in future years in terms of the impact to taxpayers. And so, understanding that the bag fee would, would create some of that revenue, the permit, the permit fees were set based on the expected income, so that we could maintain that $200,000 level. So, you'll see, I'm just going to scroll down. So, at our meeting on April 30th, which was our information session, we did put, we did publicly state what we were proposing as the bag fee, understanding that the board would need to vote on it. Actually, I can put this up. Actually, I can put this up so that folks can see it. Sorry, thank you, Seela. Just make it a little bit bigger.
Bigger, better, good.
So what we're proposing is that the sticker fee or the permit fee, which is, which would be required to indicate whether or not you're a resident of Westboro, understanding that anyone could actually purchase those maroon bags that we're going to be having for sale at different locations. The permit fee for nonsenior citizens would be $40. That's currently, it's $85. And then for senior citizens, it would be $25. And so it would become an annual sticker. It'd be $20 for a monthly permit for seniors and nonseniors, $15 for a daily permit, seniors and nonseniors, which is consistent with what we do now, as well as $10 per vehicle for a replacement permit. Right now, there is a price reduction for multiple permits in one household, but we are maintaining that, that there would actually be no reduction for multiple permits. And then also, we have a recycling sticker, which would be free of charge. So if you were to go there and only do recycling, which is what we want to encourage, you could actually do that free of charge, but you would still need a sticker that you would obtain from the Board of Health.
You want questions along the way?
Yep.
So I guess two questions about that, and I apologize if you already answered this one. But we're doing one sticker per household, is that correct?
We had initially talked about that, but I think we ultimately decided that we would allow for multiple stickers per household. There's just no reduction. So if you have two cars and you're, for two nonseniors, it would be the $80, the full $80.
That was one of the reasons, we talked about enforcement. One of the things that people have spoke to is the fact that multiple stickers results in people giving the second sticker to perhaps people who are not eligible for the service. So that was kind of the logic, I guess.
That was, yeah, so let me go to this next slide.
But we don't currently ask for license plate numbers, and we'll be matching the stickers to vehicle registration, correct?
Right, so, so now, part of the enforcement would be that we would require a photo ID to prove residency, as well as the vehicle registration. And then we would require that they be affixed to the car in a specific location. So then each permit will have a unique number that corresponds to the registration number.
So will the sticker actually have the registration of the vehicle number on the sticker as well?
No.
So how would, I just don't know how that would be monitored, like to check to say, hey, that sticker belongs in this car or it doesn't. I know other communities actually have the license plate number right on the sticker, so just.
So we actually looked into that, and, or the Public Health Director looked into that and wasn't able to find other communities where they could, where they actually did have the license number, where it was written on, where it would stay, so, because, because we were hoping to do that. But she wasn't able to find that. So I know that we have heard that that's the case, but we have not been able to identify a community that has that. I think one of the things that we wanted to do was to not make this so challenging. So we were concerned about limiting to one sticker. It's certainly something we could do down the road, but, you know, if you have a multi-car household, we didn't want to make it so difficult to access a transfer station, so.
Sure. And my second question was around, so is it then expected that there will be a different sticker color, shape, something between somebody who's just going to do recycling versus somebody who's throwing?
Yes, and that's how it currently is, yeah.
Just want to make sure it's understood.
And Patrick, just your thing, I think what's slightly better here is it still pays you throw. So even if, we don't want folks to buy a sticker and give to somebody out of town, but even if they do, they still have to buy bags because they can't throw regular trash in without the bags. So that's one piece. I would assume with this, so this will allow for monitoring and checking on a ad hoc basis. And if we catch somebody with that, it's going to go back to whoever bought it. And I think that's where we can figure out enforcement of whatever.
I would love to believe that that's how the system, I mean, that's what it's intended to do. But plain and simple, somebody could have two stickers, give a sticker to their buddy to another, from another town, and they could use that to, as long, if nobody's checking on that registration to sticker, then they could come in and they could do the recycling here, they could throw a large office. They don't even have to buy the bags, they, you know, not their household trash, but they could do, they could do, you know, throw a couch in or toilet or whatever other thing, just because they have the sticker. So that's, that's, if there's no enforcement or checking on that sticker, that's why I was suggesting that. And hopefully, there's some
Yeah, so the second.
more research that can be done, because I'm pretty sure there's other communities that do have literally right, right on this license.
We have our place in Maine, that's how we do it.
Exactly.
It goes on our front window, but it has our license plate number on it.
Yep, so I know it does exist, so. But, yeah, people are going to game the system, and I'm trying to just make sure that.
I'd like to understand that more, because I thought that, like, there was going to be charges now for, I mean, if it's pay as you throw, I didn't think we could take a couch and throw it in the hopper.
No, there's, yeah, there's bulky item charges.
But as a non-resident, you can still pay for that bulky item to go in. That still accounts towards our wheel abrator, the volume of weight that we're, we're going over here.
No.
No?
The bulk stuff doesn't, because it doesn't go to wheel abrator. That all gets, that, that's all non, that's all items that aren't allowed to be included in household trash. So the reason there's a fee for the couch and mattresses and box springs is because they can't go to wheel abrator or landfill. They have to go to, Harvey's has to pay someone to
Is that true?
destroy them.
I don't know.
Because it's also electronics, it's also electronics, it's metal.
Those certain, certainly those things have to be dealt in a different way. But like, things like a toilet or a couch, my understanding is those bulky items that are non, I'll say, volatile to the environment are less volatile, you know, mercury in them, they're not, you know, lead based.
Well, there's a whole list from the state of things that can't go to the, can't go to wheel abrator or landfills.
I don't think we can match this as an incinerator, do we?
Mattresses are no longer, that's been for a couple of years. Toilets would be considered construction debris.
Right, they want you to recycle those, reuse them, et cetera. But I'm not sure if all of them are not going to wheel abrator, that's my point.
Yeah, I don't believe that construction materials are going to wheel abrator. But I think to your point, so I'll ask again, I don't know, I'll talk to you offline about what town to talk to, because that's what we did want, was the license plate number to be written on there. That being said, I think the second part of the slide is important, which is the monitoring. You know, currently, there's no monitoring, and so that we would have town staff or volunteers monitoring, not, you know, spot checking, things like that. And then also, permit holders must agree to terms of use, which we'll have to develop. But certainly, part of that would be revocation of ability to use a transfer station if you did give that to somebody, your sticker to someone else.
That's what I'm interested in, so thank you for saying that. That's where I was going with it, is the next step is, we look at it, and we have to figure out what that enforcement is, and whether it's fines, revocation.
Yep.
Whatever, I think that is important to have, because, and doing those checks. And yes, there'll be spot checks, and we won't catch everybody, but if people know that we're doing that, and they get caught, then they lose.
Right, there's some result.
There's some result to that, so I think that's at least something we can do now that we're not doing.
Yes.
Presently.
So, as I said, so it is a reduction, the sticker price. I did give you a backup spreadsheet to show you kind of how we got there, but essentially, we made some assumptions about how many nonseniors and how many seniors would be purchasing stickers, and then got us to make sure that we were maintaining that. It's about $177,000 to $200,000, depends on the year. So the average is about $177, which is what we, which is what we're, we had estimated for fiscal '25 when we did our local receipt estimates between the bags. I think what we, what we expect is that, you know, in the first year, we will learn a lot about what the revenue actually looks like, and what the cost of the program fully is. And so certainly, I would expect that we would make adjustments for fiscal '26, both in the, both in the budget, and then also with revenue estimates, and trying to understand, you know, maybe the best path forward. But there's, there's just a lot of data that, that we don't currently have. So we used the data that we do have, and when I say we don't currently have it, it's because we don't know what the usage will be and, and how many bags people will purchase, things like that, so.
Can I ask us one further question? So, I should know, but, so you said it's 85 now, but is that 85 for two years? So now it's 40, so it's 80 for two years now, based on this, or is it?
It's 170.
So it's 85 for.
It's 85 for one year.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
You tell my wife to buy us the dump sticker, not me.
And then, right now, the senior.
Transfer station sticker, not the dump sticker.
It's a permit.
Yes, the permit.
The permit.
Okay.
And the senior citizen rate currently is half. So they pay $42.50 for one year, 85 for two years.
Oh, that's great, thank you.
And I'm sorry, Kristy, you said maximum of two stickers per family?
We didn't put, we, we aren't proposing a limit. So if that's something that the board wants to discuss, we could bring it up at a future meeting, or I guess if you wanted to limit it today.
Oh, so there currently is no limit either?
No.
He is paying. But as a discount, now it won't be a discount.
Right, there's no discount.
I will tell you that a lot of people that I was speaking with were questioning the single sticker, but now that we're talking about going back to multiple stickers, you know, they, they saw the logic in a single sticker. They were first kind of not happy with it, but then they understood it. So I, from my perspective, the appetite is there to keep it smaller than larger. I don't know if one or two is best. You guys want to discuss this now, or do we want to push it off? You know, obviously Shelby's not here, and she's done a lot of work on this. Do we want to have this for the further discussion?
I guess I'm comfortable going forward as it's currently proposed, knowing that we're going to monitor, review it and see. You know, when I, you know, when I've been at the transfer station, you know, and looked and said, okay, logistically, how's this going to work? You know, I was there for a period of time last weekend, and, you know, seven cars went through. You know, five hit stickers, one didn't, and one was a commercial landscape vehicle, right? That was clearly violating the rules. And so, you know, I don't, I don't know how much of someone getting two stickers and getting to a friend out of town, given that other communities have, you know.
Curbside.
Have curbside or have pay as you throw, so there'll be no advantage to doing that to Westboro. If they're, if they be pay as they're throwing in their own community now, we're sort of, maybe we're an easy target now. I think we'll be less of an easy target in the future. I think the key, and I don't think it has to be complex, you need, you know, you need a camera setup to catch back bumpers and license plates. And, you know.
Two arguments.
You know, and, and, you know, once a week, review all the footage for the last week. And if there's a mismatch, you know, send a letter and the fines, whatever we develop over time. So I'm comfortable going forward, knowing if we have to restrict it in the future, we can.
I agree.
Yeah, no, I'm okay with that. I mean, I think also when you add in the pay as you throw. I mean, right now, what happens is those other stickers, you know,
Are really valuable.
just go to families in other towns, they go to contractors in other towns.
Because there's no monitoring, I mean, I think this was now even.
Well, that's my question, are we talking about limiting it to, or allowing it to continue to be whatever?
Well, contract, if we're monitoring this, contractors aren't going to be going in there and throwing their stuff in the hopper. I mean, contractors are not going to buy bags to break up their material to put in, pardon me, maroon bags. You know, so it's really, so, and that's a lot of, I mean, I think that's the greatest issue that we need to prevent. And if, for some reason, your uncle in another town wants to use our bags to throw out his garbage, I don't know that that's really going to impact us too much.
Yeah, I mean, I just think, Alan, I appreciate what you said too. I mean, I think this is, we're learning.
Yeah.
And trying to put enforcements in right now. Like, I'd want to know, for example, once we go to this pay as you throw, how many multiples do we have? How many more than, you know, we could make this enforcement, but if we have one person or 10 people that have more than two, is it really an issue? And if we, you know, and I think as well as that enforcement, we're going to learn through that. And I hope, I really hope the enforcement piece, and Alan, to hear you, and I mean, I think we can figure something out here. And I think it should be, it's going to be something that scares people. So if you say, hey, we're going to revoke your ability to dump even through pay as you throw, so then you're going to have to pay for curbside, to me, that's a deterrent for folks to buy and have the, run the risk of getting caught and losing all privileges.
Well, and you would also have to, you have to show your registration, so you would also have to have a unique registration for each of your stickers, right?
And that's what we do, I mean, just going back to Maine, is, so we have one for each car, but I have to go in each time with that car, with that, basically with that car's registration to show that we're owners of cars that, it's in our name and we're the taxpayer and all that stuff.
And they limit it to, in my town up there, they limited to two stickers per household. But, so, I mean, I just want to be clear, are we talking about limiting it to two? Or just allowing it to be whatever? I don't know the fact that you have to do it by registration. Let it go, we'll see what happens.
And I think we just look at it.
Get some data.
Yep. That's what I think.
I think that's a good idea.
I mean, I am interested in if a lot of people are losing their stickers. I mean, it's supposed to be affixed to your bumper, right?
Right, exactly. That's the other piece, is that, and that's what we put on here too, is that it has to be affixed to your bumper. So you can't just hold it up. I mean, another thing.
Or tape it on your windshield.
Well, I had somebody, believe it or not, tell me that they Velcroed it between cars. I'm like, you can't do that.
You also, currently, if you go in for a daily or monthly permit, you just have sort of a piece of paper. So we're going to be creating, like, great colored placards that you have to put in your windshield, so that it's not as easy.
I was going to ask a question, is that something they pick up here at Town Hall? Okay.
Yeah.
Board of Health?
Yes.
Okay.
So I would move to approve the bag and permit fees as presented.
Second.
Any further conversation? No, seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you all, then, Kristy.
So the other piece of that, sorry, the other piece of that agenda item is the, is the contract with Way Zero. You, some of you who were able to attend the information session met Taylor from Way Zero. So she, they actually, so they are actually the vendor for the bags, so they'll, they'll print the bags for us. They'll work with the, the vendors, sorry, they'll work with the stores that we would be selling them at to set up the agreements. And then they also do education. So she actually joined us at the Environmental Action Fair and was able to help with that. Way Zero is on the state bid list, so they're local, they're used by other, other, some of our surrounding towns. And so we want to move forward with them. And so we're asking that the board authorize me to finalize and execute an agreement with Way Zero.
So I'm fine to do it, but I would, as finalizing the document, the one concern I have is that the minimum order size for a store is 300 cases of large and 300 cases of small. I think that will make it, you know, at a cost of over almost $38,000. I think that's, that'll work for Roach Brothers in Stop and Shop. I don't think that'll work for any of the convenience stores, where I think it would also be helpful to have these available. So if there can be a lower case limit for, you know, convenience stores that may want to do it. I see this as a way for convenience stores to, you know, as local, locally owned and run businesses to bring in some more customers.
It's a smaller option, it's quantity.
Yeah.
We can certainly talk about that.
Ask them, see if it's, see if it's possible. I mean, there might be 300 cases for a reason, because it's a semi-trailer or half a trailer at a time, but.
I would just, I would just say, though, that typically towns will choose just a few locations, so it's not necessarily available to anyone. So we would likely choose some specific locations, and it would be limited initially, so.
When do you anticipate providing the list from the town to?
We have to sign this agreement before we can do that, yeah. But we certainly want to work with Roach Brothers. A lot of towns do like a hardware store, so potentially Ace Hardware. It will take us more time to get into a stop and shop, so we could reach out to them. We just probably won't be in there by July 1st.
Other questions? I did have a question on Section 13A, and also, which is in conjunction with the table under Section 6 of. the table under Section six of Exhibit A, which is the calculated anniversary cost. So it talks about in Section thirteen A, it talks about a five percent, let me go back up to it here, talks about inflation, on the anniversary effect of the, the WZ supplies and service fees shall be increased by a fixed rate of five percent, which, I just went back just for kicks and giggles to look at what the, what the inflation rate has been over the last hundred years, and it's averaged three point one percent, and over the last ten years at under three percent. So the five percent seems high. I would also just note that when you look at that table in, in, under six, the increase from year one to year two is a one percent, about a one percent increase. So I didn't know, it didn't, I'm trying to reconcile between what's said in the paragraph and what's said in that table.
Yeah, so this is, so they're actually required, because it is on the state bid list, to, to honor this table. And what we did was, we entered, we were, we were proposing to enter a two-year agreement with them, because that's what we committed to when we, with the implementation plan that the board approved. And so, so it is the, the, what's in the table here.
Okay. And I guess, can you speak to the five percent piece? Obviously, the table's at one percent for the first year, one and year two, but year three comes along, it's gonna increase by one percent, or is it gonna increase by five percent?
It's the table.
So it's gonna stay, okay.
Yeah. This is the state contract, so we can try to take that out. I just, I'm not sure that we'll be able to, but I can certainly raise that.
That's all I had. Any other questions?
I'd move to authorize the town manager to finalize and execute a contract with Waste Zero. Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Thank you, Kristy, for the work on that.
Sure.
Item fourteen, are we ready for item fourteen? Metro West Regional Emergency Communication Center.
Oh, can you just?
Oh, do you wanna? Do you wanna skip?
Can we just skip that for just a minute? Because I know Chief Purcell was planning to join us remotely.
Let's knock off six, seventeen. Was there any interdepartmental transfers?
No.
Okay.
Check.
Check mark.
Oh, fifteen.
Fifteen. Green Communities Sustainable Grant.
Yep, we can do that one. So this is just a request that the board generally allow me to, to sign any applications for green communities or the climate leader, grants under the Green Communities and the Climate Leaders Program. And as the board is aware, we regularly apply for those and often try and meet deadlines. You know, now that we have Ben as our sustainability coordinator, he works with the committee as well as folks from DEP. And so, just looking for that authority. I certainly would keep the board updated in terms of which grants we're applying for, but it just, it does require the, the signature of this chief executive officer, and so just looking for authority, so that we can move those things forward more efficiently.
Any questions?
No, I think it makes sense.
I'll move to authorize the town manager to approve all applications made under the Green Communities and Climate Leaders Program. Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Minutes?
We can also do the health savings account.
What, eighteen first, or minutes?
Why don't we do health savings account, and I will recuse myself on this one? So I will recuse myself on the, on this topic, due to my wife's working for the town and affected by this insurance plan.
Great. Thank you. So, we are gonna move on with the continuation of the health savings account contribution. Kim?
Yes, in your packet-
I can tell you were leaning forwards, so it was a good call on my part.
In your packet, you have a draft memorandum of agreement. As the board may recall, back in February, ahead of town meeting, when we were finalizing budgets, one of the last budget numbers we typically have is our health insurance renewal. So one of the things we were looking for is we were identifying, moving forward with our health plans, we meet with our insurance advisory committee, we ended up with a very favorable rate, did not make any plan changes, but two years ago, we introduced a high deductible health plan, and along with that, the board agreed to a town contribution to health savings accounts for employees who participate in that plan offering. The two-year agreement is set to expire the end of this fiscal year, so we're just looking to formally agree with the unions through an MOA to continue that contribution. We're just looking to continue the current terms. It is a, just wanna make sure I get it right, it is a thousand dollar contribution for an individual plan subscriber, and a two thousand dollar plan for a family plan subs, two thousand dollar contribution for a family plan subscriber. We disperse these monthly on a pro rata basis, so we ensure that if somebody picks up the plan or drops the plan six months through the year, they're getting that prorated amount. So again, this is just part of the process that we have to meet with the insurance advisory committee, and there are thirteen unions that we will appropriately amend that MOA to reflect the correct union, and I'm just looking for the board's authorization for the town manager to execute that agreement.
Great. Any comments or questions? I'm, I'm fully supportive, because I have been along, I think this is great, and this is a way to incentivize folks, and it's beneficial for the town, so. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the MOA as presented and further, to authorize the town management, town manager to execute the agreements with each bargaining unit. Second.
All those in favor? It's three to zero, three voting and present.
Thank you.
The chief's joining, so do you wanna do the minutes, and then, as he gets on?
Sure.
I will move the acceptance of the meeting minutes, or the approval of the meeting minutes of April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Thank you. I got this one done.
Okay, he's connecting right now, so I can get started. So we have two items under the Metro West Regional Emergency Communication Center. The first is an amendment to the intermunicipal agreement. This is really just to formalize the change in location. So the board had previously authorized us to move forward with twenty Phillips Street or the Harvey Building, noting in the MMA recently that, that we had actually identified thirty Otis Street as a location. We do need the IME to be amended, so you have an amendment in your packet to just change the address. And then the Grafton Select Board at their next meeting will vote similarly. As you can see on the amendment that we put together, it requires a super majority of the two boards, and so, and then the, the managers execute the agreement. So we can just start with that one.
Yeah, so Kristy, a super majority, it means both?
Yep, both. Yes.
I would- You wanna go?
I'm, I'm-
Okay, go.
I move to approve Amendment Number One dated May fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four, to the agreement for a Metro West Regional Emergency Communication Center District.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
That's a super majority here.
Chief, thanks for joining.
We kinda have our meetings in cars, huh?
Um, the, the second part of this agenda item is to authorize, and I apologize, I didn't give you a motion, but to authorize the town manager to award and execute contracts and associated project documents, so there's your motion. But essentially, going through this process, you did enter the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Grafton, which created a board of directors, which is myself and the town administrator in Grafton. And so we did proceed with this, with application, obviously, of the grant, which we were awarded, as well as putting out to bid and then making an award to the OPM. Understanding that the building is still a Westboro asset and will continue to be a Westboro asset, I did have a discussion with town council about the authority in terms of signing this contract. And so, so we are looking for the board to authorize me to sign the OPM contract with Colliers. I did mention, I did tell the board that that's what we were moving forward with. We did go through a process, a procurement process, we did interviews. When I say we, I mean myself, Chief Purcell, the town administrator from Grafton, both the chiefs from Grafton, as well as Al Gordon, as the chair of the municipal building committee, did sit in on those interviews as well. And so we have negotiated a contract with Colliers, but looking for the board's approval and authority to move forward. And then understanding that, you know, of course, there will be additional agreements when we hire an architect and, and move forward with that.
So if we approve this, you will still keep us updated as to what's going on?
Yes, yeah. And, and also, for the community, one of the questions that we asked of the bidders, or the OPM that we selected, is to help us create a webpage, so that we can keep the community informed of the project. We also, the chief and I intend to keep municipal building committee in the loop, so lots of different sort of touchpoints as we move through this. The board eventually will need to sign, will, will need to develop some sort of lease agreement with the district, and so that'll be another thing that will come before you as well.
Any other questions? Anybody wanna take that motion?
So moved?
Okay.
As was stated.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion?
I just, chief, anything to add from your side, or, I know you joined us.
No, the town manager nailed it perfectly, and really, nothing else, that's spun up.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor? Four-zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining, chief.
Have your night.
No problem, thanks, I agree.
So this brings us to town manager report.
So you have the town manager report in your, or, on the desk, but the first update is related to liquor licensing. So the governor did sign into law some provisions, some COVID-19 provisions that have become permanent. So one of them is the alteration of premises for outdoor patio seating, no longer needs to go to the ABCC, and so we're able to expedite that. And then also, the to-go mixed, the to-go mixed drinks service is also a permanent provision now that was signed into law.
The to-go?
To-go.
Mixed drinks to-go?
Yes. Not wine and malt. So. Our April twenty-twenty-four Employee Excellence Award was awarded to Liz Scher, who's the administrative assistant within the assessing department. Liz has really stepped up, understanding all of the transition within the finance department, as well as the chief assessor serving as the interim finance director. We did have, sort of following on Chris's update today, we did have a wastewater discussion today. So I, last week, I participated in a housing roundtable with Governor Healy, Lieutenant Governor Driscoll, and Secretary Augustus, where I raised wastewater as an obstacle to meeting the housing goals set forth by the administration. So I did follow up to request a discussion with LG Driscoll, related to the town's moratorium. So today, I, along with our public works director, community development director, director of planning, and the Shrewsbury town manager, we did meet with LG Driscoll to discuss the issue, which was a great conversation to sort of surface the issues that we're facing, and we left there with a commitment to continue the conversation and to actually make a connection. Her office will help us connect with folks at DEP. One of the major concerns that we have is the regulatory process and it being a multi-year process, and so something that we wanna get ahead of as quickly as we can. The downtown development plan, we continue to work on that. So the second public meeting for that is Wednesday, June fifth, from six to eight, in the Great Hall of the Forbes Building. So the consultants for the project, RKG, will be presenting recommendations and outcomes from the first meeting, but we'll also be presenting some ideas for rotary scenarios and improvements, so. And then, pay-as-you-throw information is available on our website. We developed some great materials, or I should say, Owen Page from my office developed some great materials for the website following the April thirtieth information session. We're also planning two additional informational meetings in the first part of June, which we'll advertise shortly, but one of them will be during the day at the senior center. In the DPW, Kyle Grendel and Joe Bocodaro participated in a Mill Pond sixth grade class site walk at Sander Pond, where they discussed the roles of the forest in our water supply. Several DPW leaders attended a Worcester County Highway Association forum that reviewed the Limminster flooding event from last year. The DPW will recognize National Public Works Week, May twentieth to the twenty-fourth, with training, professional development, and team building events. And then also, DPW is happy to have Derek Sari back after several months of absence. In the fire department, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health performed an annual licensure inspection and evaluation of the fire department's emergency medical services division. So DPH inspected the communities for paramedic ambulances, supplies, all kinds of things. They, uh, this work has required a tremendous amount of off-duty effort and dedication, and the department does not go unrecognized. We wanna thank Dale Goodspeed, firefighter, paramedic, for his tireless work moving the department towards compliance. This week, from May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, is the fiftieth anniversary of EMS Week, and this year, the national theme is honoring our past, forging our future. As the fire department continues to support the citizens and the growth of the community, it's important to acknowledge the foundation of our EMS system here in Westboro. Firefighter Paramedic Kristy Bennett has worked her last shift effective April twenty-seventh, as she retires from public safety after serving in fire EMS for over twenty-five years. In the police department, to increase transparency and communication, the police department recently added a link on its town webpage to allow access to the department's policies and procedures. The municipal road safety grants third enforcement campaign, Click It or Ticket, runs May first through the thirty-first, and is focused on seatbelt use and distracted driving. And the department recently posted a promotional process for the rank of corporal to fill two anticipated vacancies. In the board of health, we've completed the youth sales compliance check in the town. There were two establishments that sold to minors, Divine Liquors and Sonny Liquors, Inc. They are subject to a thousand dollar fine, and suspension is pending for a vote at the next board of health meeting. On May twentieth, at seven PM, in the Forbes Building, the Greater Boroughs Partnership for Health, in partnership with Representative Kate Donahue, will be holding a Narcan training in honor and in memory of her son, Brian Donahue Simpson, who passed away due to an opioid overdose when he was, overdose when he was thirty-two years old. Also, they're moving ahead with the opioid strategic plan. The scope of work includes two focus groups, ten key informant interviews, and secondary data analysis to present best practices for how to use the opioid abatement funds in our region. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Issues and correspondence? Anybody like to go first?
I'd be happy to. On April twenty-sixth, we had the annual Economic Development Committee Awards in town. They were hosted at Use For Venues on Oak Street. Thank you to them for hosting us this year. That day, we had five winners, New Town Downtown Business, Milk Street Gas and Auto. New Development was Grossman Development Group. Health and Wellness was Westboro Tennis and Swim. The Civic Pride Award went to Julio's Liquors, who also this year was named one of the top seventeen liquor stores in the country, the only one listed in New England. I don't believe those top seventeen were ranked, so I think we have to assume Julio's is number one. And then, for Hall of Fame, on their fiftieth anniversary, the Community Advocate Newspaper was awarded. And let me just say, they are racking up the awards this year. The Marlborough Economic Development Committee named them the Small Business of the Year, and their publisher, Dave Bagden, was named to the Power One Hundred in the Worcester Business Journal. So- So thank you to everyone who attended and congratulations to all the winners.
I just, I just, real quick, Municipal Building Committee meets, Christie mentioned that. So we met beginning of May and continued our work as we move forward on the various projects in town that we talked about. And at this point, have a lot on our plates. We will meet again beginning of June, but anticipation is that we'll have more meetings as we move forward with these projects in front of us, including the work on the community center. So that is the update, only update I have.
Okay. So from the Westboro Affordable Housing Trust, at our May meeting, there was a vote to award the administration contract for the Homeborough Down Payment Assistance Program. This will be a one-year pilot program with grants, zero interest deferred payment loans and zero interest deferred payment forgivable loans based on different income and asset levels to assist households, Westboro residents who are looking to move into a home. It'll be open to first-time home buyers, people fifty-five or older who might be downsizing or renting and looking to own. There's some other, there's some other eligible groups, including town employees will be eligible. This is while the goal of the program is to help households that don't necessarily qualify for affordable housing to be able to move into market-rate homes where they can afford the mortgage and utilities. It's the down payment that's the obstacle and helping overcome that. The Housing Trust had applied to TD Bank's Homes for Everyone Grant Program through their charitable foundation. It is a competitive grant. We did not receive a grant, we believe it was because this was for a new program that we were looking to do, not one that existed where we could provide statistics. And so the trust voted in our May meeting to, as a one-year pilot, to fund a rental assistance program. And it'll be similar in nature to what we did during COVID-19. And the goal is to fund it to, until we can find other sustainable sources of funding and to get a sense for community demand. Along those lines, I do want to note that part of our motivation for doing that out of our existing funds is that Mass Housing Partnership has a housing health monitor that each quarter updates statistics. For the six months ending February twenty twenty-four, there were seventy-seven evictions from rental units filed in Westboro over that six-month period. That is a rate of twenty-nine point four evictions for every one thousand apartments, for one thousand rental units. The state average is sixteen point seven. So the eviction rate in Westboro is close to double the state average in that six-month period, so. And we've heard anecdotal information from Juliet Youth and Family Services about families walking in having, looking for help having been evicted. In addition to rental assistance program, the Housing Trust is looking at educational forums for landlords to let them know that there are programs that they can initiate to get rental assistance on behalf of their tenants. Evictions are time-consuming and very expensive for landlords as well. If we can connect them with resources that let people stay in, get them whole or close to whole, the landlords are better off financially, the tenants are better off with better housing security. Along those lines. A reminder that on Memorial Day, the Memorial Day festivities are scheduled, there's information on the website, it's out there, there's press releases. Folks can, if they want to, meet at the Knights of Columbus starting at eight AM. The more formal parade will start at nine AM, south of downtown on South Street, with things moving forward from there. On June eighth, the American Legion is having its annual poppy sale from eight AM to four PM. This is a fundraiser in commemoration of veterans and those who have served and those who sacrificed, gave the ultimate sacrifice. The funds are used to provide services and assistance to veterans. They'll be at Roach Brothers Stop and Shop, Julio's Liquors, Katniss Booksellers, and Lowe's this year. Veterans are being paired up with members of the National Honor Society from the high school to do that. And then on June fifteenth, the Veterans Advisory Board will also be, again, doing a flag burning ceremony at Veterans Freedom Park. This year, they're encouraging people who want to properly and respectfully dispose of flags to bring them to the event. You'll be taught how to fold and place it on the fire properly and as part of a proper ceremony. And that's it.
Thank you, Alan. I just have a couple of things. Was unable to attend the last Sycamore Westboro meeting, but can report that the subcommittee, or sub-team, I'll call them, Zero Emissions Vehicle Policy Team has met a couple of times and with the help of Christie and her staff are continuing to make progress on developing a zero emissions vehicle policy. Also attended my first finance team meeting last week, it was a great meeting. The two primary topics that were discussed were talking about starting discussions in regards to comparison communities and, you know, do we need to refresh that? And also, we gave them an update on the board retreat and the things that we discussed there and looking for opportunities to work across the other town departments. On a sad note, I'd like to express my condolences to the Catarius and Padone families and friends and a genuine thanks to Dana Catarius, who I worked with many, for many, many years when she was known as Dana Padone. Dana was a longtime resident of Westboro, having attended Westboro schools and graduated from Saint Joseph's and Assumption Colleges with advanced degrees in counseling. And I believe she was employed by Westboro at the Fail School as a counselor for over twenty-five years. I'm sure she will be missed by the many, many whose lives she touched. And that's it. Thank you very much. I'll get, take a motion to.
Go into executive session?
Go into executive session, thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? What's in our agenda versus what's in our package is on the unions? Are we doing both police supervisor and firefighters or?
No, you can, you can take out police supervisor.
Okay, perfect. So I will move to enter into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, eight-three, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the firefighters' unions if the chair determines that open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the board's position. And under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, eight-three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Ferris Development Group LLC versus Town of Westboro, Lax Media LLC and Lax Media MA LLC. Worcester Superior Court, CA number two-two-eight-five, CV zero-one-two-eight-one. If the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, eight-three, discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Town of Westboro versus Westboro SPE LLC, Boston Suffolk County Land Court Case Number nineteen TL zero-zero-zero-seven-six-eight. If the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. And under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, eight-three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Westboro SPE LLC versus Town of Westboro, Westboro ATAL, US District Court, CA number four-twenty-three, CV one-two-zero-one-seven-mrg. If the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, eight-three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding Westboro SPE LLC, US Bankruptcy Court Case Number twenty-three-four-zero-seven-oh-nine. If the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, eight-three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Residences of Westboro Station slash Northland TPLP LLC at one hundred Charleston Meadows Drive, Worcester Land Court Case Number twenty-two, MISC zero-zero-zero-four-four-five-drr. If the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's negotiating position. And under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, eight-three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation related to the national opioid litigation, if the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. And under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, eight-six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property at fifty-seven Brigham Street, if the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the board's negotiating position. And under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, eight-seven, to act under the authority of the select board to approve executive session minutes of April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four.
And I declare that an opening session would have a detrimental effect on the board's litigating, negotiating, and bargaining positions. And the board will not be reconvening an open session at the conclusion of the executive session. Can I ask for a second?
Second?
And a roll call vote?
Keo, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
And Welch, yes. Thank you, Westboro TV.